Well, hello, everybody. It's wonderful to have folks with us tonight in person. I'm welcome. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We start with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Weddings.
Here.
Six present. And next up, a request for approval of the minutes from the October 4th work session and evening meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the work session and regular evening meeting minutes for October 4th, 2022.
We have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to abstain since I was absent from the meeting.
Thanks. And Clerk, will you call the roll? Weddings.
Abstain.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Five in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And next up, we have some very special business. We've got Jim Werns here with us, nominated him to serve on the Public Works Commission for a four-year term, and he has agreed. So with that, his nomination is before you.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent to appoint Jim Werns to the Public Works Commission for a four-year term ending October 2026.
Without objection.
And Madam Mayor, I was so excited to see this appointment pop up. I've known Jim for a long time. I think many of us have. And to have someone of this caliber willing to put in the work to serve on our Public Works Commission is just amazing and want to thank him.
But I know Jim had a couple of things to say, so come on up. And while you're on your way up, I just want to say thanks as well. Jim, for many, many years, served as the head of EPA Idaho and retired. He looks much younger than he is. Was lucky enough to retire, and I was really excited to that he was willing to not really step out of retirement, but to add to his fun activities and include serving on the Public Works Commission as one of his fun retirement activities. Because of the, not only the good work that you've done and did for the state, but the partnership that we've had over the years on both when you were in that role and beyond, and how much that overlaps with the work that Steve and his team is doing at Public Works. And it's particularly important as they shepherd through our Climate Action Division, the very successful Climate Clean Water and Climate Action Bond and the new water renewal systems that we expect to build. And of course, the infrastructure will build to support Micron's move here. So really, look forward to having you join this commission. That's really an engaged commission. And I expect that you'll enjoy them as much as they'll enjoy you, and want to thank you for your service.
Great. I think this is on. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council members for the nice welcome. And yes, I'm actually enthusiastic about joining the commission. I did have a great, long-running career, and I got really twisted into a lot of municipal infrastructure issues, primarily in the public works arena during my EPA career. And I'm really interested in the issues, and we've got a lot of big challenges. And when you look at the suite of activities that the Public Works Department has to tussle with and sort of the future goals that we've got in the city for, you know, a low-carbon future, there's some great issues to work through and some important investments to make. So it's a great honor, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. All right, you are free to leave. Of course, you can stay and listen if you'd like, but we won't think any less of you if you head out. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to point out in the minutes and reports that we have minutes from the first two Boise Districting Commission meetings. And remind everyone in the public that if you are so inclined, you have two more days to use our MapTitude tool to create and submit potential districting maps to the Boise Districting Commission for their consideration at their October 19th meeting. So hop online. It's on our website. Just search for Boise Districting Commission, and you can nerd out on MapTitude.
Thanks for pointing that out and letting the public know about the deadline. Clerk, will you call the roll? Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And now, we will move to third reading. We've got one ordinance on third.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 4722 be dispensed with, and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, we call the roll? Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-47-22, an ordinance CAR 22-00008 per property located at 2667 Victory View Way, amending zoning classifications of the City of Boise City to change the classification of real property particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights of way from R-1A, single-family residential, 2.1 units per acre, to M-1D, light industrial with designer view, setting forth a reason statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ORD 4722.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Weddings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And now we will move on to the public hearing. We've got PUD 22-3, an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. Now, I have on here, the presenter is Jessie. Hello, welcome. And then the appellant, Dan Nivala, our Koush Law Office. Hi, Dan. The applicant, Daphne Romani. Daphne. The Neighborhood Association, Ethan Mansfield. Is Ethan online? All right. And then we don't expect any of the public to attend, but if anyone is... Amanda, are you here for this? Okay. If anyone is online and wants to testify, when we all ask at the time that we're opening it up to those of you online to see. So with that, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the item for you is the appeal of PUD 22-3, an application for a planned residential development comprised of 77 multifamily units. The subject property is located on 5.26 acres at 1093 Hilton Street in an R2 zone and surrounded by a mixture of housing types with commercial uses to the south and east. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 4th, the commission approved the applicant's proposal to convert the structure from an assisted living use to a multifamily building with conditions. There was public testimony given concerning the lack of transparency by the property owners about their intentions. While the commission expressed their frustration with the limitations of the code and acknowledged this was difficult emotionally, they ultimately decided this was a land use decision and that the application met the criteria for approval as seen on the screen. On April 14th, an appeal was received from our Koush Law Firm on behalf of Mark Seinfeld stating two main grounds of appeal. The applicant's memo asserted that noticing provided by the city and the applicant did not comply with the requirement to notice residents and property owners within 500 feet of the site. While there was a typo on the project report that stated notices had been mailed to properties within 300 feet, notices were correctly mailed to owners and residents within 500 feet of the subject property. The public record does not show the list of all names for the sake of privacy, but there's a map showing all addresses which received notice. Unlike multifamily buildings, residents of the assisted living facility do not have individual units with individual addresses, so they did not receive individual notices. The mailing list does show that there was one notice mailed to the subject property addressed to tenant. Therefore, this ground does not demonstrate error in the city's noticing procedure. The applicant's memo also states that the application will harm the community overall and that the proposal is not supported under the goals and principles of the comprehensive plan, namely that the subject property is in an area of stability, the conversion rule is out in fewer units, and the building does not constitute an adaptive reuse, as is not historic. The subject property is in close proximity to a community activity center, which is recognized as an infill priority area and an area of change. The applicant does propose to decrease the unit count, but the proposal contains a mixture of unit types, which will allow for an increase in density near public transit and other necessities, which can reduce vehicle miles traveled. While the building is not considered historic, reuse of the building diverts materials from the landfill and is in line with the city's sustainability goals. In conclusion, the planning team recommends the council deny the appeal and uphold the commission's original decision to approve the PUD as the request meets the required findings and complies with the requirements of the Development Code. There's no evidence to suggest the commission erred in this decision, and I will happily answer any questions.
Are there questions for Jessie?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
As I read through the transcript, the Planning and Zoning Commission was instructed on the things in the ordinance that they could rule on for a PUD, but I didn't see any discussion about things in the comprehensive plan that they could consider in terms of conditions on the application. Did I miss those, or was there a discussion about the comp plan?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there was not any direct discussion of the comprehensive plan that night. I believe that the commission looked through some of the elements within the project report.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question just about as far as the public process goes. So maybe you can tell me if I'm correct. So if there's an assisted living facility, is it sort of treated like there's no individual addresses? There are, we think there would be room numbers, but like, is it treated like a group home where you only have the one address and the people who live there don't necessarily have their own? I guess I'm not going to word this correctly. I'm having a hard time trying to understand how you can engage people in the public process and what the difference is between an assisted living area where people have residences and get mail delivered to them and the difference between that and a multi-unit housing complex.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is kind of a unique situation where if you have a multifamily building, each unit has its own separate address. However, when we use the JIS to populate the noticing, it doesn't come up with different tenant names or different tenant numbers for their rooms. It comes up with the building because the building is a care facility.
Good. Madam Mayor, just to follow up with this. So in our code, does it list these different types of facilities as saying that it only needs to have the one notification sent to the one address? Since there's only technically one address, is it spelled out there pretty specifically?
Madam Mayor, council members, I believe that the code just states that that has to be addressed to owners and occupants of the facility. So in this case, since there are not multiple separate addresses within that facility, they did notice to the tenant of the facility, and whoever receives the mail in that facility received that notice.
Great, great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Just to follow up and clarify, though, we have always treated mailers to each address as prima facie evidence that notice was sufficient. Isn't that right?
Madam Mayor, council members, correct. We always mail to the owner of a property and any resident of that property.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vala, come on up. We'll hear first from the appellant.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. I put together a short PowerPoint presentation to walk through the issues as I see them. You've touched on some of them. The first issue, I represent Mark Seinfeld, and Mark's brother is a member, is a resident at this assisted living facility. And notice is the big issue here. There's two types of notice that he needed to go out here. One is for the neighborhood meeting, and the second was for the actual public hearing. So in terms of an agenda, I have a clicker here. These are the things I wanted to talk about briefly. So as I think it's been mentioned, this was a fairly emotional hearing at the time. And I thought I'd point out some of the commissioners' comments and some of what I think they struggled with at the time of the public hearing. These are a few of the comments that were made by the commissioners that night. And I just pulled these out, and just to give some context to this, I think they really struggled with what was happening here. There were 115 residents in this facility, and from our best investigation, while I do think the facility was mailed notice, the individual members of the individual residents never received notice. I think it was posted. In terms of the mailbox situation that Councilmember Halliburton raised, these, in talking to Mark, my understanding is that these individual residents do have an individual mailbox within the facility. I asked the simple question, if I want to mail your brother a letter, how do I address it? And his answer to me was, I address it to 1093 South Hilton Street, Box 246. So the issue of whether or not these folks got notice is fundamental to this, and it comes down to really a fundamental fairness and a due process issue as to whether or not the members and the residents of this facility got notice of both the neighborhood meeting and of the public hearing. So if I go back and I take a practical look at this, what I see is there was one written comment submitted, and there were four people who testified at the public hearing. And they were family members. The way they learned about the public hearing wasn't because of the notice. It was because of publicity that came through the newspaper. So I look at those numbers, and I see the 115 residents, and it just doesn't add up to me. What it seems to me is it's clear to me that these people did not have notice. Their family members didn't know about this. Otherwise, I'm almost certain there would have been more of a response. I think it's just... What this ultimately has the possible impact of doing is forcing these people to find a new place to live. We're talking about the possibility of displacing elderly and displacing folks with disabilities. And I'm not trying to downplay that this is a land use decision. What I'm trying to say here is that I think that as an issue of fundamental fairness, I don't think they had proper notice. Therefore, I don't think Planning and Zoning had the opportunity to hear from the public that would be impacted directly by this. That's my first issue on appeal here is the notice issue. And there are two ordinances that address both the neighborhood meeting and, secondly, the public hearing. So the language in the neighborhood meeting ordinance states, "For comprehensive plan, land use, map, addendums, annexations, and rezones, special exemptions, conditional use permits, and planned unit developments greater than one acre or on Gateway Street, the notice shall be sent or delivered to residents and property owners within 500 feet of the site and to the Registered Neighborhood Association." So the key language there, I think, in terms of notice is, "shall be sent or delivered to residents and property owners." I think the property owner got notice. I don't think the residents did. That's as to the neighborhood meeting. The next piece of this is, with regard to the public hearing, step four, notice subset, sub C, talks about mailed notice, which is just, there's a distinction there. I think mailed notice implies use of the US mail. It reads, "Notice shall be mailed to the applicant and to the property owners, purchasers of record, residents, and registered neighborhood associations within the subject property. See for comprehensive plan, land use, map amendments, rezon, special exemption subdivisions, five acres or greater, and conditional use permits, planned unit developments greater than one acre or on Gateway Street 500 feet." So the piece here that I think is critical is, "shall be mailed to the applicant and to the property owner's purchasers of record, residents, and registered neighborhood associations." So, "shall be mailed," again, residents. The only, the best analogy or A analogy that I thought of in terms of trying to compare what's going on here with something that I think we can maybe wrap our hands around is when we mail something to a student at a college, they get, they have a mailroom. The college has a mailroom, and each student has their own, you know, unique box. And if you just address it to the student and you don't put that mailbox on it, they're not going to get it. What happens here is the US mail, I think, it's very, it's the exact same situation. They have, they process the resident's mail, and they go ahead and they put a flyer or a letter or whatever in each one of these residents' mailboxes. That's how they get their mail. In this situation, to the best of my knowledge, one mailing was sent to the owner, and that's where... You know, that's what was generated in terms of the address. But that's not the reality of the situation. Reality of the situation is US mail processes these, this mail that comes to this facility, and it gets delivered to each of the individual residents. In my client's individual situation, Mark's brother is a resident. Mark's brother suffers a little, he suffers from neurodegenerative issues, and he's not really able to process his mail, so Mark processes it for him. And that's why Mark has essentially come to me, asking me to bring this to you and explaining the situation to you, and, you know, very clearly explaining that his brother did not get this notice. The way he learned about this was through the newspaper. So that's the notice issue. The second reason we appealed this has to do with the comprehensive plan. And I think that PNC was... They mentioned they were looking for reasons, and they were struggling and wrestling with the idea of how could they, you know? They felt they had to approve this. And they were looking for reasons, I think, not to approve this. And I think if they'd have looked a little closer to the comprehensive plan, they would have found the answer. So in our appeal brief memo, we state that the application is in direct conflict with the comprehensive plan. And I'll try to speed up. So I went through each of these in more detail, but I've sort of summarized them here. And I've tried to give you the sites. So the goals of the comprehensive plan, goal PDP 1.1, was cited as a reason for approval, but in our opinion, it's in direct conflict. This is not an infill project. And I state why there. Goal 2, NAC 2.2 in corporate housing was cited. We talked about, they talked about density. In fact, this decreases the density from 115 to 77. I think that's a real issue. Goal CC 1.1, reduced vehicle miles traveled. The applicant states that the project will not reduce the vehicle miles traveled. I keep going through. There's more reasons. Principal GDP dash 0.3, mix of housing types. It's actually going to reduce that mix, I think, best I can tell. No, let's see. This is a pretty important one for us because it really does directly address part of the issue here. Theme number seven in the comp plan, Boise recognizes the need to protect the health of all of its residents, including its most vulnerable populations, refugees, homeless, elderly, and low-income residents. This application is in direct conflict with this theme. Mark's brother in particular. One of the comments is that there's an abundance of facilities like this one for his brother to go and find a place, a new place if he needs. From what Mark tells me and from my own personal understanding of the situation, that's simply not true. There's not an abundance of assisted living facilities that will take a resident or a potential resident with neurodegenerative issues, dementia, early onset Alzheimer's, those types of issues. It's just not there. And that's why oftentimes those types of residents or potential residents are legal or illegal disqualified from finding and obtaining occupancy. I think that is, you know, this is another issue that absolutely needs to be looked at. This is the one issue that I said, okay, fine, if this is one of the goals that's supported, this could possibly be a positive impact here if the improvements were made. The street improvements, that's four out of five. Here's the reason statement. "We propose there's insufficient evidence in the application that there will not be a negative impact to vulnerable populations in the City of Boise beyond the mere general statements." Closing remarks are in summary. What I'm looking for, what I'm asking you to consider is find this application was not properly noticed, grant the appeal on the grounds as unlawful procedure due to the notice requirements that were unmet. And the alternative, we look to the comp plan, and this appeal should be granted, and the application denied due to the conflict that I pointed out in both the briefing and just now. And finally, without a well-defined transition plan, how to move these folks out of this facility into some comparable facility. This project will most certainly be an undue burden and will adversely impact both transportation facilities and adjacent properties, plus the residents and their families. With that, I'm open to questions now, or we can wait?
Madam Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Without getting too far into anybody's personal life details, I guess I'm curious as to why you represent a brother who doesn't live there with a set of notice complaints that really go to the rights of the brother who does live there. Why don't you represent the resident?
Yes. I guess to answer the question, the brother's simply acting as his brother's agent. He came to me. I'm willing to divulge that my client is an attorney, and he's... He testified at the public hearing. I don't think his brother's able to really comprehend all of this and what's going on with all of the nuance and detail here. And so he's essentially just acting as a brother's agent. He has dementia. He cannot represent himself. This is my client, Mark.
Yes, fair enough. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Just to follow up, so does a gentleman have legal guardianship or something over his brother? Do you have legal, I don't know if it's appropriate?
Yeah, I actually, I don't think that that is something that is appropriate or part of the, should be part of the record here.
Okay.
I mean, we have an attorney who is appealing the case.
Okay.
And is representing the appellant in this case, and that's okay, just as it is.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, Mark is willing to address the council if...
Yeah, Mark's one of the... Hello, sir. You're on the list of interested parties right now because you've got two minutes left. So you can finish, or you can finish the remarks with the time that you've got. It's totally, but I think that the question about legal connections and stuff isn't necessary in this case.
Thank you.
Mark, you're going to address it?
Sure. Pardon me for being late. I thought this was starting later.
You made it just in time, and you didn't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
I'm happy about that. But to answer the question, I am, I do have legal power of attorney. The point I want to make is that this is not a question of if the code requires ABC and the application says we have ABC, then it's approved. A robot could do that. and the, and the application says we have ABC, then it's approved. A robot could do that. The reason I appealed this was because I was hoping that the planning and zoning board would use their discretion to see what was going on here. The process was flawed. These people have individual mailboxes. They were not notified. Nobody who was a resident in this facility went to the hearing, the public hearing, because they didn't know about it. And when news did come out, the developer sent a letter saying, don't worry, we're not going ahead. Stop. And I checked online and there it was. They were still going ahead. So I felt we were misled. But in any event, I hope you are aware, this is an extremely vulnerable population. People in wheelchairs, people with walkers, they can't get around. Some of them have been there a long time. One man I spoke to was there for 12 years. Some of these people have no families. They're not going to be able to just get up and move. Frankly, I think what is going on here is unconscionable and, and should not be allowed. I'm not sure what else I can say.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor, do you have a question?
And the, either of you, depending on who is addressed, can answer the questions now.
Yeah, my question, thank you both for coming. My question is really about the addresses and maybe, what's the right way to work? Do you know if they're legally recognized addresses?
All I know is that the post office shows up every morning around 10 o'clock. It's a US postal worker and puts individual mail into each individual box. My brother's is 246 and he gets his mail addressed to him, 1093 South Hilton, number 246.
Okay, Madam Mayor, it looks like staff maybe has something to respond to there.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. While there are internal mailing systems available, these systems are not publicly represented and publicly available. So while there are mailboxes and addresses for individual residents that is with an internal mailing system, it would be like a dorm. Dorms wouldn't get each individual receipt as well. And unlike a multifamily building that has each individual addresses.
Madam Mayor, just quick follow up there. So like if I'm going to apply for PUD or variance or something like that, a lot of times I might go into the city and the city is going to give me a list of all the people that I have to mail within the surrounding 500 feet, correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
And so what you're saying is that the folks here aren't actually listed, so you wouldn't be able to figure out who and how many to send to because it's not officially listed or documented on city site.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. It's listed as one address and then they have individual rooms within that address, but those are not on the public side of the mailing.
Good.
Madam Mayor. Sir, you said that when the post, the letter carrier shows up, they are the ones to deposit the mail in each individual box.
Yes.
So it's not like a bunch of letters is dropped off and then you've got a staff member whose job it is to put the mail in people's boxes.
No, it's no different than an apartment building or a college dormitory. Everybody has their own box with a number and they get their own mail.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So a follow-up question on that, if these aren't publicly available, why is it that the post office delivers to them?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I mean, when I say publicly available, I mean that they're not assigned individual addresses by the post office. Each room is not assigned individual addresses. Like the same thing with a dorm, you can write, you know, room 107 and they might have their internal mailbox for that, but that is not publicly available as an individual address.
Okay, thank you. Second question, if I might, Madam Mayor. You, in your closing remarks, you reference a transition plan. Do you have an example of what you would consider to be an adequate transition plan?
Thank you. All I, I don't, short answer, long answer. There was no transition plan proposed or no transition plan discussed. Transition plan, I think, would include things such as identifying places for these folks to go. And, and, and finding, there's the comment in that there's an abundance of these types of places and our, our Mark's experience and my experiences is different. I'll represent to you that I do, I do estate planning and I represent elderly folks in this community and, and their families. And a lot of times housing comes up and housing is an issue. And in a situation like this where you have a, a resident or a client with dementia, it's not always easy to find placement. That's the type of things that would have to go into a transition plan from my perspective for it to be viable. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
One last comment, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
With regard to the mailboxes and whether or not they're filled by a US postal carrier or a staff member or they're sent to an individual mailbox or a room, all I would say is this. In terms of the mailing address that goes to the actual property owner, that's one thing. I think it's important that we separate that from these individual residents who Mark says have individual mailing addresses. I think the onus and the burden here has to lie with the applicant to ensure that they're in compliance with the language of the ordinance that requires these residents get notice. So if it means they have to go to the assisted living facility and ask, how many residents do you have? Here's 115 mailers, please put one in everybody's box. I think that's where the onus lies. I don't think it's as simple.
I'm going to ask you to stop just because we're timed, but you can finish that in your rebuttal too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the applicant.
Madam Mayor, council members, Amanda Schaus, Eileman Burke, 251 East Front Street, Suite 1300 Boise, Idaho 83702, representing the applicant in place of Daphne Ramani. The applicant agrees with the commission's approval of a CUP for an apartment community for this site. The decision is supported by substantial evidence in the record and was not an error. We feel the staff report was an excellent summary and we will highlight just a few, a few points in our presentation. As you know, the criteria for the approval of a PD is focused on whether the land use and physical development is compatible with the neighborhood. It is code criteria. And reviewing a decision on appeal, an arbitrary and capricious decision is one made without a rational basis or disregard of the facts. Also is stated in the code where there's room for two opinions. Action is not arbitrary and capricious when exercised honestly and upon due consideration. In this case, the record supports the commission's decision approving a multifamily use for the site. There are many goals as outlined in the staff report in the comprehensive plan that are met with this project. In fact, this property has actually been approved for apartments through CUPs three times previously. There are multifamily projects already located in the vicinity. This use provides a compact mix of housing types for families and singles. Residents will be near a community activity center where they can use public transportation and amenities such as a branch library, grocery store and restaurants. The design promotes reuse of an existing building with no proposed exterior building changes. The design promotes infill through the use of existing infrastructure and minimal site changes. Parking is sufficient for the use and will be improved to code, including better access for service vehicles and adding connectivity for pedestrians. The project provides improvements to curb and gutter and sidewalk improvements and connectivity which has been identified as lacking in the central bench area for pedestrians. Finally, we do note that the neighborhood association had no objections to this use or this project at the hearing. Appellant makes several arguments based on the comprehensive plan that the commission's decision was arbitrary and capricious and contrary to the plan. The comprehensive plan is one factor of six in improving a PUD. It is a guidance document with many broad goals and policies, many of which are met by this project and are refined by the code and the code factors. A key component to the appellant's argument is that this project is harmful and contrary to the comp plan because it has less units than its existing use. It was reduced from 115 units to 77 units. First of all, we note the 77 units is a maximum number permitted by the code. Importantly, although the number of units is reduced, this does not mean there will be less occupancy in the project. If the unit mix is taken into account, if you assume one person per studio apartment and one person per bedroom, the existing use has 124 occupants. Interestingly, the approved use has exactly 124 occupants because of the increase in two bedroom units from nine to 47. Thus, the, the reduction in the units is not a compelling argument in this case because it does not translate into less use or less density in the community. Appellant also argues this is not an infill, infill development. Infill developments in both the code and the comp plan focus on whether the property has existing infrastructure and not a specific density, although higher density may be allowed. In this case, the applicant will utilize existing building and infrastructure with minimal change and is infill as contemplated in the code and the comp plan. Appellant also makes the argument that approving an apartment use here makes the neighborhood more homogeneous because there are already apartments in the neighborhood. This is contrary to the PUD criteria, which looks for compatibility in the neighborhood. It also does provide a new mix of unit types, allowing families and singles to live in the neighborhood. Finally, as far as the comp plan, the appellant argues that this proposal to provide apartments worsens the housing crisis. There's no evidence in the record that providing apartments in this case makes the housing crisis worse. As the appellant provides no evidence, except for his own personal testimony tonight, that there is a lack of house, a lack of facilities for the for the residents to go to, that is really not established in the record one way or the other. Our client, who's in the industry, believes that they have the healthcare community ties and relationships that should, should this change occur, that they will be able to accommodate and provide the transition necessary for all of the residents. This, the transition plan was already, condition was already considered by the commission. They determined that the criteria was more specific and that the project met the comp plan. We agree with this decision that all the criteria have been met and that a, that a PUD is appropriate for this use in this property. That being said, the applicant recognizes and hears the concerns from the residents about the transition. At this time, applicant has not decided if it will move forward with this transition. This is why there's no detailed transition plan and it's not been a criteria of determining, at least prior in determining PUDs and CUPs that a transition plan be provided. If the applicant decides to move forward with this, they will certainly provide a transition plan and provide details and communication to all of the residents about the changes that may be coming. As far as procedurally, I do want to correct the record. The applicant, the record does show that the applicant has had, had three letters sent to the residents. The applicant has also had meetings with the residents about this potential transition. As staff has pointed out, we have met every requirement that has been established by the city in, in providing notice for the neighborhood meeting. Applicant has, or the appellant has not produced, there has not provided any evidence that any person did not receive notice of what was happening during the commission hearing. Or that anybody was harmed by that failure. There were postings at the site. There were letters in the mailboxes. We paid for the mailing address that the city provides to provide notice and we sent notices to where it was required. This was not done in a vacuum. The staff communicated with the residents about what would be happening and what the, what the commission meeting was about. Relatives are not required to be notified. So no, unless you're in the 500 zone, 500 square or should circle zone, you aren't required to get a notice. In the end, all city processes were followed. I, I, there's no residents who say they weren't notified and they didn't know what was going on at that meeting. In conclusion, as discussed, this is based on the CUP, PUD criteria, this is a land use decision. The purpose of this is to decide whether or not this use is compatible within this neighborhood. And it meets all the qualifications to be an appropriate use. It's been approved three times before as apartment use. And everybody who's required to be notified was notified, were notified and the residents were communicated with. We do understand this is sensitive and we do understand that if we decide to move forward, that a transition plan would be appropriate. Accordingly, this decision was supported by substantial evidence and we hope that you, we request that you deny the appeal and that you approve the CUP as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions for you about the notice. Help me out here. Their point is 115 people live in the building that you're proposing a conditional use permit to change. You know they're there because they're your tenants. You sent one letter and then you sent three additional letters to each resident. I'm looking at the letters, each one of which downplays the hearing, says this will be over at the hearing. There's nothing here. We're not going forward with these plans. Don't worry about the hearing. And so their point, I think, is you knew there were 115 people there. You didn't tell them about it individually. And instead, what you did tell them was don't worry about this process. It's a nothing burger. We're probably not even going forward with it. When I look at the code that says you must notify property owners and residents, how do I get to the conclusion that that was done here? Like in a reasonable way, not a technical way, but a reasonable way. The spirit being provide notice to the people who live there.
Madam Mayor, council member, thank you for the question. I can appreciate the struggle. As far as the mailing of the notice, frankly, we have, we've followed the processes that the city required. They said you needed to provide a notice by mail and here's the, here's the mailing addresses. So we did that. So that, that requirement has been met as far as this, what the city's established processes have been. As far as additional to that, there's a large sign, two large signs at the site posting saying this meeting is happening. So anybody visiting the site, the residents can see the signs. Additionally, the applicant did meet with the residents and did provide letters of communication. As you pointed, as you pointed out, there, there were some portions of those letters read into the transcript. They were not submitted as part of the record.
I have, I have the letters here. They were put on the screen and so they were in the hearing and I'm reading the whole letter. And each of the letters says, if you boil it down, don't worry about this process. Circumstances have changed. We're likely not going forward. This is all going to be over soon. Don't worry, you're fine.
Madam Mayor, council member, I, I didn't realize the whole letter was in the record. I only read the transcript where they read the letters out. I don't know. I guess it's based on a screenshot.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see the screenshot. In this case, all I can say is the, you know, the management company communicated how they felt they needed to about the, about the notices. And I really have nothing else to say about that, except that everybody was aware, residents were aware clearly that there was a meeting. And they were mailed proper notice as required by the code and as recommended by staff.
Fair enough. And then I have one other follow-up question, not on the notice, if I may. I'm just confused and it's like, it's not as confrontational as, as what just happened. I promise. There's Denapoli Capital Partners, there's Arbor Village. There's an individual, like what is the relation, like when I get a, when I look at a letter from Arbor Village, is that from the applicant? When I get a, or look at a letter from Denapoli Capital Partners, is that the app? Like, how does this all fit together?
Madam Mayor, council member, Napoli Partners is the owner of the property. The Arbor Village, I believe, is the management, the, when a letter comes from Arbor The Arbor Village, I believe, is the management. The, when a letter comes from Arbor Village, it's from their local onsite management team.
Okay. And they're separate entities or is there common ownership such that they're the same people?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, I actually, I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So you say that you met the code because a letter was mailed to the 1019 Hilton address. The code says that you will provide notice to residents within the development. How does mailing something to the management address notify residents within the development?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, thank you. Thank you for the question. The, again, as we usually do, we relied on paying for the mailing list and we sent the mailing list out. We felt that, the applicant felt that it communicated with the residents about the meeting. And that is sufficient to meet the requirements, that all the residents knew that this meeting was happening. There were large signs posted at the site. There was not an intent to trick anyone about the fact that the meeting was happening.
So they communicated with the residents via these letters that also, as has been pointed out, downplayed the meeting. But the residents never received notice that there was a PUD meeting, an official city notice saying there is going to be a PUD hearing on this issue.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, there was a notice sent to the property as required. It's not in the record whether or not that was copied and sent to
But it wasn't sent to the residents within the development.
That is correct.
Thank you. If I have one other, if there's not other questions, you noted that if, in fact, the applicant decides to go forward with this, of course, there will be a transition plan. I take that to mean that you will not object to a condition requiring a transition plan.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, because we, a transition plan has not been prepared because we don't know if we're going forward with it. And so just the level of detail at the, in the questions that came up at the hearing, we simply hadn't, hadn't prepared a specific transition plan at that time. Properly worded, a transition plan condition would be acceptable. But I'm, what we're concerned about is the fact that there's really not any precedent for that. It's not clear what that would contain. It's not clear whether we're required to find spots for everybody or if we're just required to provide resources. I don't, it's like the, what's the, who's going to determine what's adequate? So at this point, it seems premature to have a specific transition plan. But the residents, my understanding is the residents, they like the facility and they want to stay there. And despite some of this testimony about, you know, the communications from the company, from management company or the owner, if you want to, hold them together. They, the applicant cares about the residents. They want to do a good job. They're more than happy to provide their services and their connections and the time to make sure if they decide to do this, that their residents are taken care of. They're not going to put residents out on the street and just say, you know, here's your 30-day notice. That's just not the way they operate and they won't do that.
Thank you.
Looks like nothing further. Thank you. So next up, I'm just going to check to see if the Neighborhood Association is here. Online.
Madam Mayor, I have one person online. It's, her name is not on the parties of record list. It's not clear if she's here for the Neighborhood Association.
All right. If the individual online would let us know if you're here for the Neighborhood Association, I'd appreciate it. Okay. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to parties of record. Mark, you've already testified. Is anybody else here to testify? No? All right.
Madam Mayor, could I ask a question of staff?
Of course.
When we approved the apartments at the corner of Protest and Boise Avenue, we required a transition plan, if I'm not mistaken. You two may not know about it. I don't know if you were involved. But I believe the city has experience with understanding how to write a condition and develop a transition plan.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe that the project you are speaking of had a rezon attached to it, which has different criteria. I do believe that there has been some transition plans written when approved by staff in the past, however.
I had to say that that was, I can't remember if I was sitting in this seat or as a member of the city council, but that was my memory. It sounds like it was a different type of application, but there was some sort of plan and then a runway for residents that was agreed to by the applicant in that process.
Madam Mayor, I guess I've got a question related to that. My memory, and I don't know if staff can confirm this or not, was that they volunteered to do that, but it wasn't something that we required. But maybe I'm not remembering that correctly. Cody would know.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, or James, do you know? I wasn't here when that happened.
Good memory, Councilmember Hallie Burton.
Once in a while. Madam Mayor, I do have a question to follow up for staff because I feel like I just need to get some clarity. So I feel like there's two different things. There's the way that I think that it should be, which is I think that every single resident should get a piece of mail in their mailbox. And then there's also what currently code requires there to be. And I think that those are two different things. And so I'm trying to figure out if code requires that each of these residents should have been notified or does code explicitly not make that requirement?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers.
And I realize that's a hard question, so I apologize.
Yeah. Currently, code requires that we essentially inform all owners and tenants or residents. However, the way that the addressing works is that we get it from the federal mail system. And that mail system does not have room addresses listed, if it's a dorm or if it's a situation like this, or else we would have access to those. However, the noticing was sent to the owner, Denapoli, and then also to the tenant, which is the management company of Arbor Village. And that is what our code requires at this point in time.
And Madam Mayor, just a quick follow-up there. So if, if I didn't know who lived in a certain area, my process would be I would come to the city and the city would tell me and they would give me the list of names and I would mail those lists of names. Because the city would have those listed in the federal recognized addresses and I may not have any idea of who those neighbors are if I didn't actually own the building. And so I'm just going to assume that the city's correct and that the addresses they have are the ones that I should send it to because it's listed federally or federally recognized addresses. And that's kind of the process that we have for any type of development.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, that is correct.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. So when we sent notice to the property, was it to a person? Was it to an individual or just the address?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, what happens is if the owner is not living on the property, you send the, one to the owner and then it is just listed as tenant. And that is how it is addressed at this point.
And so do we know if any tenant at that property received that notice?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, at this, well, the tenant would be, who received this would be the management company of Arbor Village. Because they are the ones that are on that lease.
Thank you.
I have a just follow-up question about that, this. I don't expect to be voting, but this is curious to me as a process. And as we think about if there are cleanup things after this. If I were a student at the dorm, who would, so it would go to the owner, which would be, is that Boise State? And then who would be the management company or the one, the one person that would get the notice then at the site?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I believe that would just be Boise State as the owner. That's correct. And then whoever receives the mail for the building as the tenant. I know that there are, you know, if you get like a mailing for coupon ads, it would just go to the tenant of the building.
Okay. Madam Mayor? I'd be curious after this to know if there's a way that we can know how, how often this is occurring in the city.
Madam Mayor, just to answer your question, as a former RA at Driscoll Hall.
I started wondering, like at Notre Dame, would the nun get it? And then Boise State, the RA would get it?
Yeah, yeah. So they have resident advisors who staff a desk. And the mail carrier will come in with a bundle or a box of mail and then the resident advisor throws the mail into the
Great. Yeah, I just, for some follow-up after, I don't want you to feel like it has to be like a rush, drop everything else, but I think it's something we, we should understand how pervasive this issue is through the city.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we can definitely go into that. Thanks.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I've got one more question and it's the same question. Worded slightly differently. So our code tells us that all residents, owners, tenants require notification. That's what's written in city code. I think it was up there earlier. The appellant showed it. Our policy is that we read the federal recommended addresses. So that's internal policy. It's not written in code.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, that is all we have access to is the federal mailing. So we can't know exactly who occupies each room, how many rooms there are. That's not part of the federally available record at this point. So that is why it would just go to the tenant of the building, which would be the management company in this case. And then at that point, it'd be up to them to distribute that information to their clients, essentially.
But that's just our procedures, our policy and procedures. It's not actually codified that that's how we look it up.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I don't know how we would look it up any other way if it's not publicly available.
Fair enough.
Any further questions? Oops, sorry. Any further questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, one, one last question. Asked the question in the beginning, whether or not the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically talked about the comprehensive plan. I asked that question because as a conditional use permit, you are allowed to condition the application to meet not just the ordinance, but also the comprehensive plan. And as I read the comp plan, there's a couple of sections, but specifically SC, SHCC 14-1, coordinating resources that would allow us to require a transition plan. Just wondered if, and maybe our legal counsel will need to weigh in on this, if I'm correct, that that would support such a requirement.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I think that'd be better answered by the legal team.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I find myself without a mic at an inopportune moment. For the record, James Smith, Deputy City Attorney. As I understand the question, it is whether the city can rely on the comprehensive plan rather than the CUP criteria in imposing a condition to mitigate impacts of a development. I'm seeing a nod. So that it's, it's tricky in terms of to know what exactly the condition is. I think as the applicant indicated, the, the boundaries of it are undefined, but I think as a general way of looking at it that might be helpful is to ask whether the impact being mitigated results from the proposed new use that requires a PUD permit or results from ceasing an existing use. Or in other words, results from from not renewing existing tenant landlord relationships or customer relationships that, that do not require city approval, much less a public hearing in order to, in order to, to change. That may be a helpful way of looking at it. But certainly within council's discretion to, to look at specific conditions that might be adduced in deliberation and, and go look back at those criteria to see how they relate.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and hear from the appellant. We've got a couple of minutes for rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, one thing I would point out.
I'm not sure if your mic is on.
The green light. Should I yell?
There, it's better. Yep.
Thank you. One thing I'd start by pointing out to the language, back to the language of the notice requirement. The way it reads, with regard to the public hearing, it states, notice shall be mailed to the applicant and to the property owners, purchases of record, residents and registered neighborhood associations. When I parse through that, I start with the word shall. What it means to me as a lawyer who deals with contracts all the time is I interpret shall to mean has a duty to. Okay? Has a duty to do what it requires. Here, again, it's mailing. I think the rub is this. What I hear from staff is that they provided the applicant with whatever they could get through the federal mailing system. So they provided the address to the property, not knowing that there are residents inside the property. That's, I think, the rub for everyone. The rub that I have here is to be able to try and comply with this language and the duty to provide these residents with notice, I think it has to fall on the applicant here. They have to figure out, how do we get these people notice? How do we mail them notice? And I think it has to go, it goes back to that respectfully. Again, to me, this is a false start. My suggestion in terms of the remedy is either deny it or in the alternative, remand it, renotice. Let the people make sure they get notice. Let them have the opportunity to be heard. They're the ones who are going to be impacted. And let them testify before the commission so the commission can hear the whole story. With that, unless there's questions, I'll rest.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. It's really a constructive one and I'd like your help. The code says notice shall be provided to residents, property owners, et cetera. But I think we all kind of know that's not quite what it means. For example, if a gentleman is living on the street in front of the property, has no mailing address, he's certainly a resident within 500 feet. But my sense is failure to provide him with notice wouldn't violate the due process rules or the policy or the procedure. Similarly, I don't think somebody who lived at a property and was on vacation or never checked their mail could validly object that they were not provided with notice. Although the code says, you know, residents shall be provided with notice, that can't really be what it means. And so my question is, what does it mean and why, in your view, is, you know, whatever it means not met here? Because it can't just be purely technical text. There's, there's some practicality here somewhere.
The way I would respond to that is this, it says shall be mailed, okay, to the residents. There was one mailing. There wasn't 115 or 116 mailings. There was one. I think the simple solution for them would have been, since they know what the nature of the business, of the building is and they know that these residents, hopefully they understand, you know, that they each individually, as Mark has said, have a mailbox. They have a means to get their mail. They have some unique identifier that connects their name to a mailbox within the facility. And to go one step further, it's filled by a US postal carrier. So finding out what those unique identifiers, whether it's finding out what those unique identifiers, whether it's one through 115 or it's something else, that would have been the way to do this. To your point of if someone is living on the street next to this thing, I guess I'd say, A, they probably don't have a mailing address. These people have mailing addresses. And so there's a means to get this mail to them. And in Mark's case, in Mark's brother's case, there's a responsible adult who's checking his mail regularly, who is reading it and finding out, and he didn't get it. He's testified he didn't get it. So I have to believe that if I go and find the rest of these residents and I quiz them and I find their families, I'm going to get similar answers. That's why I come back full circle to the fact that there were, there was one written comment and there were four people who testified at it. I just don't think out of the 115 people that were impacted, they didn't get notice. Otherwise, I gotta believe there would have been some more testimony.
Madam Mayor, can I ask one follow up? What about the signs? So notice, you know, shall be mailed. There's an issue with the address list in the federal database. Wasn't mailed individually to each person, you know, whatever. But then there were also signs posted. So practically speaking, like, why isn't that a reasonable enough effort to provide notice?
Two signs posted, they're not visible. They're on the extreme edge where nobody goes. Do I need to repeat that for the record?
I think so. I, I heard it.
So I'll repeat for the record, Mark, my client came forward and stated that the two signs that are posted on the property are on the periphery of the property and he says they're not visible.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had a great uncle that stayed in an assisted living facility for a long time, but I was young, so I don't know quite how they worked. So when you move in, do you sign a lease? It is a month to month? Is it, do you do like a year, six months? Like, how is it? How's the agreement when you're moving into a space and becoming a tenant?
I think you do sign a lease, but I can ask Mark for details on this particular property. It is a month to month tenancy.
It's month to month. Yeah, somebody comes in, they're not necessarily signing a contract for a year there, month to month. Great.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, sir, since you've already shared that uh you have legal authority uh to help your brother, um, is that contract entered in by your brother or by you?
In this case, it was integrated to by me. He, he doesn't have the capacity.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, and now we'll have the applicant up and I switch the order. So after the applicant um provides rebuttal, if you have rebuttal, I'm going to check in with the appellant to see if there's anything more you'd like to add. Madam Mayor, council members, uh just thank you for the discussion. It's very um well reasoned and I appreciate all of your thoughtful questions about, about this process. The only thing that I'd like to point out uh at this point is the record does show, uh and this is in the record, the size of the public signs that are out front because uh uh council member Bayesian asked about it. Uh, so that is definitely, uh, those were both, uh, both signs were put up and they're both quite, quite large. Other than that, um, I'll stand for any more questions.
Madam Mayor, um, as I'm reading our ordinance, uh 110303, it does allow for alternative forms of notice, but it does not allow signs uh in lieu of mailed notices. So um I, I appreciate that the signs were there. Our ordinance requires a number of different ways of notice, including signs, including newspaper, including mailed notices uh to residents within the development, specifically within the development. So um I guess I, I wonder how having signs would meet that requirement.
Madam Mayor, council member, uh, that's a, a very good point. Uh, I think the, my understanding is the point of all those forms of notice is that they will reach the people intended. In this case, it, the, the mailing, it's to an address and maybe you don't know um how many residents heard an address. Uh, that's a requirement. The post, sign posting is another requirement. So people who maybe didn't get caught or weren't um didn't get the mail notice might see if they're visiting the site to visit a relative or uh anything like that. So uh I do think there, I agree with you, there are a number of forms of notice. I also believe that the residents were very aware of this uh commission meeting. Uh, and the applicant did meet with them in addition to the mailed notice that was required and, and did, did do communication and did um uh, and there was never an intent to hide the, uh, the intent or the purpose of the meeting.
Madam Mayor, just one follow up if I could. Um, the, your client did mail something to the residents. When did that mailing happen?
Council member, um, sorry, Madam Mayor, council member, uh, the testimony, uh, just to be clarified, the letters that I'm referring to that were in the testimony were placed in their mailboxes. They were not mailed, is my understanding.
Okay.
And that is based on, I'd have to look.
But they, they got a letter in their mailbox.
They got three letters in their mailboxes. And uh I could look in the, if you give me one moment, I can find it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I offer December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, March sixteenth, twenty twenty one, and March seventeenth, twenty twenty one is maybe the dates of those letters, so you don't have to dig around?
Madam Mayor, council member, yes, you may. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. Is there anything new that the applicant or the appellant, excuse me, um, would like to add? Because I switched the order, I'm giving you one more chance, but I know that you both disagree about the content, timing, et cetera of letters. I'm just wondering if there's anything that Bad Exchange brought up that you did not address.
Madam Mayor, council members, the only thing I would add is I would implore you to keep in mind that the residents here, some of the residents, I won't say all of the residents, but some of the residents, including Mark's brother, my client's brother, are in it. Uh, these folks are, he's got dementia. For him to read a sign one day may not mean anything the next day. I'm not trying to ask for sympathy. I just want you to understand that the folks here, we're not talking about all of us getting notice, all of us getting things in our mailbox. That's not the situation here. That's why these notice requirements, I would point back to, that's why there's multiple notice requirements. It goes back to the importance and this applies really to all administrative law. The whole point here is a notice and opportunity to be heard about things like this. That's part of the importance here and that's one of the main issues why I think it, at a minimum, this needs to be remanded to give these people the opportunity to get notice and be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the hearing and leave you to it.
Well, Madam Mayor, I, I'm torn here. I'm going to move that we remand PUD twenty-two dash three at ten ninety-three Hilton Street to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh for hearing us with proper notice to the residents within the development.
Second. Motion, second discussion?
Madam Mayor, um, as I read our ordinance, uh, I don't believe that the ordinance was met in this case. It's very clear that a mailed notice should be mailed to the property owners, purchasers, residents and registered neighborhood associations within the subject property. The applicants knew all of the residents within the subject property and they, while they sent them letters, they did not send them official notice. And our ordinance requires notice. It doesn't require a letter saying, we're going to go through this hearing, but don't be worried. What it requires is there's going to be a hearing that does this on this property and it's going to be on this date. And you are able to come and testify if you'd like. That's what a notice says. I'm not sure. I, I'm, I am sure that the residents didn't receive that. And so in my mind, um, despite everything else, and I will say this, I think the record supports this use at this site. I think the record, uh, although I would disagree with some of the comp plan clauses that were used in support of it, I think in general, our comprehensive plan supports this. But if the people directly impacted didn't have a an ability to comment, then we haven't met our requirements.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I seconded the motion uh because I think it's important um that we have folks like this kind gentleman to bring forward um examples of why we have the policies in place that we do. Um, you know, the, the numerous attempts uh at noticing folks are, exist for a reason. Um, you know, not everybody in our community um is able to advocate for themselves. And um, you're, this gentleman's brother is fortunate to have him. Not everybody has somebody who is in a position to uh advocate for them. And it is for those people that we need to uh err on the side of overly notifying folks. And so um, I appreciate the gentleman bringing this forward. I think it has highlighted the need uh for us to stick close to this ordinance and to err on the side of of being generous in our thinking of the needs of our community. Um, and so that, for that reason, I am supporting this motion.
Madam Mayor, I really appreciate the motion. I think that it's the right decision, right? In that these folks, I believe, should have been notified, could have been notified. I don't think I can vote in favor of it. And the reason why, you know, we have one of our, you know, one of our policies, when there's two opinions, you know, one, we can't overturn it because one opinion might be different than, than the two different opinions here. And here we have a developer who, again, I believe should have notified each of those residents. They could have known, notified each of those residents, but they came to our city staff and our city staff gave them, here's the requirements, here's a list of the people that you have to notify. And so they followed those rules to do it. If you look at our city code that's up there, it would tell you that all the residents should be notified. And then I started asking myself, well, if they're month to month, you know, if it's somebody who's staying here for an extended period of time and they're a traveling nurse, you know, whatever it may be, there's all these different types of temporary uses. It's starts to make myself ask like, are they residents? My uncle stayed at an assisted living facility for three years and he had a bird feeder up and he had his house decorated. It certainly seemed like a resident in that sort of circumstance, but I just don't know that our code and the way that our city operates and the way that we give a developer an instruction would inform that developer to follow those things. So again, I, I appreciate, this is something that I would really love to be able to support. But when I look at the way that our code's written um and what instructions our staff gave to the developer, I don't think that I can vote yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to take a run at changing council member Hallie Burton's mind. First, reasonable minds disagree is the test for arbitrary and capricious. Whether something was done on a lawful procedure, uh, we review it straight up. Was it done lawfully or not? So we don't need to defer to the Planning and Zoning Commission's evaluation of whether this was procedurally correct. So you have a free conscience to look at that issue on the face and make your own call. Second, um, a resident is generally, you know, the test for residency is generally, where does somebody reside? And where, when they leave, do they have a place? Do they intend to return to? And that would be, you know, all of these people would qualify. Uh, third, the purpose of the notice requirement is at least twofold. First, it's to give people in the vicinity an opportunity to come and provide information to us that will help us make our decision. But second, it's to give them notice, advanced knowledge, that there is going to be a change of circumstances in your vicinity. And that here is a really, really powerful issue because these people are vulnerable. There's not a lot of places for them to go. And the change in circumstances for me at thirty-nine years old as a tenant would be, I need to go find another place to rent. But in advanced years with deteriorating mental status, health needs, financial constraints, that advanced notice of the potential change in your circumstances is very material to you. It's a really big deal. And so I'll be utterly candid, I don't see a problem on the conditional use permit side. And I think, I predict that when this is remanded, notice will take place and it will be approved. But the point of the notice is to give these people every opportunity to take care of their own future. And so here, I look at the code and I don't agree that residents were notified. And what they were not notified of is like the most material thing to their well-being. So that's why I'll be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor, um, I had a very similar um reaction to the resident requirement as many of my fellow council members. I think that there's minimal compliance with what is stated in ordinance. And then I think there's good faith as well. Um, I think it would have been really easy to take this the next step and notify all the residents, even if those residents don't have post office boxes that are federally um federally recognized. Um, I think it would have been very easy to include notice with the letters that they were provided because it's required by the city to inform all residents. So I'm going to support the motion. Do I think it'll change the outcome? No. Um, but I think it could also give a really great opportunity to the applicant to provide a transition plan in the interim um voluntarily. So that, that gives the existing residents some comfort that um they'll be relocated should, um, should this development come to, come to bear and um should. I'm sorry, I just got back into town and I'm very jet lagged. I'm really having a hard time here. Um, but before any construction documents are pulled, um, I think that that would, that would be um beneficial to all involved. So, thank you. Madam Mayor, I think you can tell that we've really struggled with this on a number of different fronts. Um, I'm going to support the motion and there's a couple of different reasons why, um, to remand it back to PNC. Because oftentimes, we don't get the opportunity to do things to improve the process. And I think in this case, we need to improve the process. So you've helped us see some things that we need to clarify. And I think that's really important. You know, I, I've, you've perhaps heard this phrase, the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. The letter of the law says notice. Uh, um, I think you could read this, that there was some notice given. I don't think it met the spirit of the law and I don't think it gave people an adequate opportunity to have their voice be heard. And there is not a rush on this. In fact, uh, we've said that there, this may or may not go forward. So we have time and we should do this right. And we need to ensure that people's voices are heard and it may not change the outcome, but it will change the outcome for those who don't feel like their voice was heard. So I'm going to support the motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm not going to uh be up here and debate. However, um, we've got staff that is telling developers that we have a certain way of doing things and establishing what's a residence and what's not a residence. So if we're talking about our homeless shelters, the notification process, somebody's maybe been there for a couple of years, which we know actually exists. They might even have a room number. Does that qualify? Again, I used the example of a traveling nurse earlier. I can be in favor of this motion, but I also know that to be in favor of this motion and for me to it not be arbitrary, it means that we would have to take a look at our policy and the way that we recognize and reach out to and advise developers who they have to reach out to. Because if we give them a list of one address and then they come here and we say, hey, actually, we wish that you would have notified everybody, but that wasn't the instructions that we gave them, then I don't think that that's a good piece of the process either. And so I guess, again, I can be in favor of the motion if we have instructions that this is a type of policy change that we need to be able to direct. this is a type of policy change that we need to be able to direct, so that in the future, if it's a assisted living facility, maybe that's the one that's explicitly listed, and we don't list the other ones at this point. But I think some sort of direction has to be given to staff and to developers so that they can do this in the correct way.
Madam Mayor?
I will personally volunteer to look at our notice rules, because definitely the text of what it says, residents shall be notified or shall be mailed to residents, isn't the full story, right? If you reside somewhere and don't have an address, that sentence becomes incomprehensible. So there's some tune-up and cleanup that we need to do. I'm not sure that we tell developers, if you comply with this mailing list, you will have complied with the notice. I think it might be different things, but I'll personally volunteer in the next two months to spearhead that project and clean this up.
Madam Mayor, I was going to say, the fastest way I know of to direct the staff to change a policy is to make a decision that is counter to the way that they are doing the policy today. And if there is, which I believe there is, honest disagreement about what that policy means, it will, by making the decision, will force them to reexamine that policy and the way that they're enforcing it and the way that they're administering it. So to me, to not make this decision today would tell them, the way you're doing it, it's okay. I don't think that's the case. I think especially in this case, when the applicant was the owner, was the manager, absolutely knew what those mailing boxes were for each of those residents, and the notice requirement is very clear that the residents to be mailed to include those who live within the subject property. I think for me, it's clarifying the policy that we already have in place and asking staff to recognize that we've, we as a body believe that this clarity is both needed and appropriate. So for me, this is, this is doing what I think you're asking. I appreciate Councilmember Bajin helping.
So I won't, it looks as though I won't be voting. I just want to say a couple of things. Councilmember Willetts said it exactly as I intended to, which is, there's a letter of the law, and it looks, but for all intents and purposes, as if our staff followed that. But then there's the spirit of law. And the spirit truly is that folks have access to notice, so that they have the opportunity to weigh in. And in asking to better understand, you know, the the reach of the letter of law versus the spirit of law, I think we can start that conversation. And I imagine that it is indeed nuanced, as Councilmember Hallie Burton brought up, in overnight shelters, there are many people there, but do they all have mailboxes versus assisted living facilities where everybody might have mailboxes? Dorm, I have no idea, but to me, it's, it's most likely a policy discussion after this, as we did in notice on the size of signs, for instance, where a look could be taken on how to meet the spirit of the law that was intended when the notice law was written. And with that, Clerk, will you call the roll?
Weddings. Yes. Bajin.
Yes.
Leg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, I move adjourned.
Your motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.